At the Lunenburg Town Hall in the Bellotta Meeting Room. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised this meeting is being broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. If you wish to join our Zoom meeting, the meeting ID number is 850-1582-6044. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. So I would ask anyone able, please to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first item this evening is public comment. The school committee welcomes comments from the public. Comments addressing topics under the scope and authority of the school committee are welcome. Please remember, this is public comment, not discussion, and limit your comments to three minutes. Each public comment section has a maximum of 10 minutes. Comments about individual students are prohibited by state and federal law. So first, is there anyone on the committee with the public comment this evening? Mrs. Kelly, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, since this is my official last meeting, I want to thank you all for having me be a part of this committee. I could talk endlessly about all the character traits from all of you and how amazing I think you all are, but I just, your endless dedication to these kids, just, it makes me so proud to have been a part of this, and I thank you. And you're not seeing the end of me, Kate. You're gonna be stuck with me for a little bit longer with some other stuff, but I definitely want to be a part of it in different capacities, and great job, guys. I'm so proud of you all, and I will miss you.
Well, we will miss you as well.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Mr. Layton?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Kelly. I appreciated our time on subcommittees and also on the committee, and I enjoyed your perspective, and it's just been a pleasure, and thank you for serving.
Thank you.
Alrighty. And then any other comments from anyone else from the public? I'm not seeing any raised hands. Then we will continue on. I would also say, as part of my Chair's report, I wanted to thank Mrs. Kelly as well for her time, her hard work, and her insight during her time on the committee. We will definitely miss her. And also the Disney hints. I appreciated those.
I'll always be around for that.
Great deal. Okay. So, moving on, the Chair's report. I'd like to thank all that participated in "Are You Smarter Than a Sixth Grader?" to benefit the Boys and Girls Club last Friday night. I understand that $21,000 was raised for the Boys and Girls Club. We had a ball, and great time was had by all. We did not win, but Lunenburg's finest did, and they did a fine job. And Mr. Alonso did say that he thought Hank was the deciding factor, so there we go. I did send a letter to the Select Board requesting the use of ARPA funds for the study of the athletic facility and the truck that was left off the capital plan. I did hear from Mr. Jeffries today. This is going to be discussed at Tuesday's Select Board meeting. And that's what I have. Next on the agenda is to approve minutes. Regular meeting session, April 5th, 2023. Did anyone have a problem with any of those minutes or discussion about any of them? I didn't either, so seeing that we seem to be okay with that, does someone have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 5th, 2023.
I'll second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty. Then we have policy subcommittee minutes. We have a truckload from 8:24, 22, 1:20, 23, 2:10, 23, 2:17, 23, 3:30, 23, 3:10, 23, 3:17, 23, 4:7, 23, 4:14, 23, 5:1, 23. You have been very busy. Seeing as I was not part of that committee, I would ask to either...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Policy Committee Subcommittee Meeting Minutes. Said that twice. Sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay, and all those in favor?
Aye.
And I think just Tony and Laura can vote, I think.
Oh, sorry, I thought it was the majority.
Well...
I think we can vote.
We weren't part of the meetings, so we can't... Well, that's an interesting question.
So, yeah, we've had this come up before, that we...
Well, it can't hurt to vote, but...
They haven't approved their minutes, that it has to come to our committee to approve.
At the May 1st meeting, we reviewed all of the minutes of all of the meetings. Both members of the Policy Subcommittee were satisfied with the minutes, therefore they're bringing them forward.
So we all approved them?
Yes.
Okay.
It comes with a recommendation of...
I was confused with that.
Yeah, it was a weird...
All right, let's try again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there we go. We do have a line item transfer this evening.
Yep.
Nice tie.
Ah. Ready? It's gonna be a show-up meeting tonight, right?
We're helping, we're helping.
No pressure on you guys. Good evening, Mike Cassidy, Business Manager. In front of the committee tonight, we have a transfer. Tonight, we're transferring $5,000, $5,025. This is an end of the year. Transfer, just to clean up some accounts. If I may, we're transferring $2,500 to the middle school regular substitute account and $1,000 to the high school sped long-term account. These are just some long-term absences that we're hoping the employee, or employees return. So we're just kind of patching some money through until the end of the year. And if I'd like to, I'd like to stop my presentation for a second. We're transferring money into accounts that are in the quarterly report that are in the negative.
Okay.
So when we get to that report, the negatives that are represented there are going to be reconciled with this transfer. So that's what is happening. Under new equipment, we did buy a pallet jack that kind of got us over the, that line item. Water charges, we're anticipating going over that account. We encumbered some extra money, $245 more. And then finally, equipment, maintenance and lease of equipment. We're projecting a little higher cost to our small lot of printers that are within the district. So we're trying to cover that projected deficit. And that is what is being proposed tonight. I can talk about some of the surpluses. We're just, you know, not spending as far as the long-term subaccounts. We're not spending, or having those absences in those schools. We have a small surplus in heating, and it's basically the diesel fuel for our... What am I, the...
Landscaping equipment?
Say that again.
Landscaping equipment?
No, the heating charge is basically the diesels for our... What is it? Our generators, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't prepared, so...
There you go.
So we have some extra money there. And our computer repair equipment, we're doing pretty good. We've got, our staff is managing that, those repairs. So just small amounts of money, just trying to reconcile some accounts.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Beardmore.
I understand why changes frequently, particularly this time of the year, you need to make changes to long-term subneeds. My question is on the middle school regular subs. Where 135% over budget on that particular line? I'm just curious, is there a... Do we knowingly under-budget that, or have we had a higher level of absenteeism, or is there something that's going on there?
I can tell you, the middle school has excellent attendance. I look at attendance every single day, and I manage it and communicate with Mr. Santry if I see any irregularities. There's just, we've got some long-term absences at the middle school for some person, some leave issues. So that is the coverage that we need for that.
So are we covering those long-term absences with short-term subs?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, usually our long-term, that long-term subaccount is primarily for maternity leaves, maybe as an employee that goes out for a hip replacement. Something that we know about and that we can plan for. That account, we've just seen some, just some employees that have been out on...
Unanticipated illnesses.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. I don't want to belabor this. The other question, and this is, and if you're not prepared to answer this, I completely understand, but there's been a lot of press coverage over the past couple of weeks about Chromebooks. And the issue is that there's a forced obsolescence of Chromebooks that's occurring at a period of about three years, rather than a normal life cycle of a laptop that might go four or five years. Google effectively stopped service on them and security updates and that sort of thing. Is this something that we've anticipated? And it didn't occur to me during the budget process, and I'm just curious if you're aware of that, or if this is a potential issue that we need to think about?
We, since I've been in the district, there's always been a regular replacement plan of Chromebooks. We know that there's always been a short-term lifespan on that equipment. It's a little bit shorter than laptops. Chromebooks are a little, a lot cheaper than laptops. So we've made a decision, for students, it's using the Chromebooks. Staff get the laptops, they last a little bit longer.
I think the reason why the press coverage has come up over the course of the last several weeks is because the first round of the federal money that was made available for this sort of thing was exactly three years ago. So, school districts like ours, and if you recall, we had a big backlog of Chromebooks that we purchased over the summer of 2020, are now going into their obsolescence window. So I think that, that's really the issue, is, you know, a lot of school systems, and I don't know where we fell relative to, you know, a spike in purchases of Chromebooks three years ago, I guess is really what I'm getting to.
Yeah, that was a thorn in my side about three years ago.
I remember, I recall that, yeah.
Thanks for bringing that up. There was, we had ordered some in the springtime. We didn't get them until November. That's...
Yep.
And we didn't really distribute them till, like, right after Thanksgiving. So it was an issue.
But suffice to say, we don't anticipate a shortfall in having to replace those machines?
No, and I don't know if the superintendent was gonna mention it. Can I, may I? So we were just awarded another grant under E-Rate. It's ECF funding, and we did get another 300 Chromebooks to help us replace the cycle that we have.
Oh, great.
So that, that's gonna offset some of our... We do have a replacement plan for Chromebooks, laptops. We're looking at Computer Lab at the high school. So we do have a plan in place. Yeah.
And I should have given you a heads up that I was gonna ask the question.
No, it's...
But I appreciate the information, thank you.
I can see, we've thought of that, Mr. Beardmore. We, it's, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Cassidy? Then could I have a motion to approve this line item transfer?
I'll make a motion to approve the line item transfer presented by Mr. Cassidy.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And we go on to the Superintendent's Award. Oh, no, sorry, jump down. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone.
There we go.
Another update on the Family School Partnership Initiative program with the Department of Education. The team is meeting this week again with facilitators. Update on transportation. To date, we have received a total of 1,665 transportation forms. However, they have not yet been fully vetted for removal of duplicate forms. That said, I want to offer a special thank you to all of the families who submitted the form by the deadline, and a special thank you to all of the school staff who worked through the week last week, contacting families to ensure that outreach was conducted to help families get their forms submitted on time. And according to reports from the school secretaries, we have approximately 30 total in the district still outstanding.
Wow.
That's pretty great.
So thank you to everyone for the effort to get all of these forms in on time. Much, much appreciated. An update on extended day and the Early Learning Center programs for 23, 24. There are still seats available for the Early Learning Center, and there are now limited seats available for the Extended Day Summer Program. Last meeting, I reported that we were gonna be participating in some job fairs. We did participate in the Massachusetts Educational Recruiting Consortium Education Career Fair hosted at the Boston University on April 20th. We really had some good foot traffic by our table. We received several resumes and contact information from prospective applicants. We did direct individuals to school spring to apply for posted positions, and we will be interviewing some of those individuals that we met at the job fair. Another grant or scholarship we have received. Signs of Suicide is an evidence-based depression awareness suicide prevention program. It teaches students how to recognize signs of suicide in peers and how to respond. Essentially, it takes about a class period to go through this lesson with students. They do provide a depression screening tool, as well as a checkout system, and mental health staff will definitely be available the day that they execute such a program to follow up with any students that need any follow-up. There are also materials that are, or will be available and supplied to students and parents. Stacy Canfield, our high school social worker, was the one that submitted the scholarship application, and it was approved. The cost of the program in its first year is $495, so we don't have to incur that cost. And it would be $300 annually for renewal, and we would be looking to go through this process with our ninth graders in the fall. So there will be more information about this coming to families prior to. But thanks to Stacy Canfield for looking to secure funding for some additional resources to support our students. Some May reminders. This Saturday is the annual town meeting at the Middle High School, 9:00 AM. Additionally, this Saturday is the Hanks for Hank Lemonade Stand fundraiser. That will be out in front of TCP from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. The fundraiser was the choice of a first-grade classroom, part of their SEL work as a classroom with their teacher, Krista Palmer. And the group decided that they wanted to raise money, because at one time, there had been a donation made by a family for little stuffed Hank dogs that when our SRO Brad McNamara and Hank would visit with children experiencing trauma, they could leave the child with a Hank. But we've run out of Hanks, and I thought it was a fantastic idea from the kids to do this fundraiser that benefits really the whole community, so. On the 20th, we have the annual town elections. On the 24th, our school committee meeting, which is off-cycle due to the election, will be at 6:30 PM, and it will be hybrid from the Middle High School. And of course, the 29th is Memorial Day, no school, and the school offices will also be closed. And just to end my comments, I really want to extend my gratitude to Mrs. Kelly for all of her years of service in navigating those very difficult COVID decision years, really with a steady hand. I couldn't be more grateful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Student representative, I am looking, I do not see one of our student representatives.
I do not either.
Okay. Then we'll go on to new business, and now the Superintendent's Award.
Okay, so with us this evening is Cassie Cohen. You can see her there on the screen. Her parents are both on the meeting as well, so thank you all for joining. This year's recipient of the Superintendent's Award is Cassandra Cohen. In addition to strong academic achievement, Cassie is the National Honor Society President and Student Government Treasurer. She has been a member of the World Hunger Task Force, Best Buddies, and the Varsity Science Olympiad Team. Cassie loves math and plans to study actuarially, actuarial mathematics. Cassie has been a student athlete throughout her high school career as a member of the golf, indoor and outdoor track teams. In addition to all these accomplishments in our school community, Cassie works at the Claw Shop Day Spa and has participated in many community service activities, including fundraising for and packaging meal kits for Kylie's Care Kits for Kids. She's also a student teacher at the Joseph Foster Religious School. When asked for a quote that best describes her, she offered this Dolly Parton quote: "Find out who you are and do it on purpose." Cassie has also become a favorite at Central Office because she's doing her step internship in our office, working in the curriculum office, helping prepare all the materials that the teachers at the K-5 level are using with the new curriculum. It's been a fantastic experience to have her around the building. We very, very much appreciate having her. And if anybody read the highlights and spotlights that went out, Cassie was very much involved in supporting Ms. Amy Resnick in the preparation for organization of and actual execution of the Math Nights that we have had at the primary and the Turkey Hill. So thank you very, very much for all of that support that you've been giving us at Central Office. It's very, very much appreciated. And I will also say that Cassie will be the valedictorian of the graduating class. So congratulations, Cassie.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
We are more than delighted to see you here, and we want to thank you for everything you've done for the school district while you've been here, and wish you the very best of luck as you journey along wherever your life path takes you. And good luck to you with your mathematics degree. That is certainly something I would never have touched with a 10-foot pole. I give you a lot of credit for that. So, any other comments from the board?
Congratulations to Cassie's parents also. Exciting.
True enough.
I also would not touch the active ill signs.
Congratulations.
Absolutely. Congratulations. Your accomplishments are phenomenal, and couldn't be more proud of you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is the ELA curriculum adoption, grades 6 to 8.
So this evening, Mrs. Scott is joining us. She's our Director of Teaching and Learning, and she can explain to you a little bit about the process that we went through to bring forward this curriculum adoption recommendation this evening.
Hello, my name is Annika Scott. I'm the Director of Teaching and Learning. I also want to say congratulations to Cassie. I was one of the many teachers lucky enough to have her as a student. I used to feel like I could have left her in charge of my class when she was in seventh grade, and she's been awesome in the curriculum office this year, helping us, so I wish I could have her full-time. We recently did an audit and review of our current 6 through 8 ELA curriculum materials and decided, when a grant opportunity came up from the state called Accelerating Literacy, which is also a separate grant that we called the same thing that we used to purchase the K-5 ELA materials, we decided to approach the teachers, and we all made the decision together to take advantage of applying for the grant and looking into adopting a new curriculum program. So this will allow us to provide common experiences for students across a grade level. The materials will be standards-aligned for each grade level. They'll provide inclusive and culturally relevant materials, and also allow us to align our assessments across a grade level. So the process that we took part in started when, a couple of years ago, we attended DESI's Evaluating and Selecting High Quality Materials Network that they run yearly, and they walked us through the process, how to vet the materials, how to create a council that would give input as to which materials we should select. So we followed that process, which included us, including all of the middle school teachers, and consulting with other people like Meredith Weiss, the EL teacher in District. The administration was also part of the meetings, our literacy specialist as well. We use EdReports and Curate to start off with a list. Those are organizations that vet curriculums. They have a panel of people, including teachers, so we can feel comfortable if we're going, selecting a curriculum that meets expectations on Ed Reports or Curate, that it is a good one, that it's grade-level appropriate, rigorous, and has, you know, some of the elements that I mentioned before, for example, culturally relevant and inclusive resources. So we narrowed the list down pretty quickly to about four programs. We ordered samples of the programs so that teachers could have paper and digital access to start taking a look through. We decided as a group, you know, not only district parameters like cost, which really, that wasn't anything that held us back, because we were able to submit quotes through DESI and get those approved ahead of time, even though we were looking, still looking at four programs. But things like our district priorities, you know, we really wanted to take a close look at the assessments. Of course, teachers in ELA are passionate about what texts are included in their units. We wanted to look at the differentiated instruction opportunities, and then making sure that we had Tier 1, 2, and 3 resources throughout, which they all do. After spending some time looking at four, we then narrowed it down to two programs. After spending some time looking at four, we then narrowed it down to two programs. And with those two programs, we brought in the publisher to walk us through at a deeper level and to prepare for a pilot of the materials. Teachers, we gave them a few months to kind of work through a pilot because at the same time, they were preparing their classes for MCAS and even going through MCAS. So we took time beyond the MCAS window to, so that teachers could kind of get that off their mind and then, all right, let's dig in a little further to these two programs. As they were doing that, the Deidre McLean, our literacy specialist, and I would then meet periodically with teachers at each grade level to kind of talk about, okay, what are you seeing in this program? What did you try? What's tough? What do we need to reach back out to the publisher and get answers about? Grade levels were really great about sharing information with each other. I several times went to Mrs. Santry and said how proud I was of the teachers with the work they were doing with discovering these programs. And then ultimately, we all met together and voted unanimously on Amplify, which is one of the final two curriculums we looked at, one being Amplify, the next being Into Literature, which would have been the middle school version of inter reading that we're using K through five. Deidre and I both agreed to leave it up to the teachers ultimately because we loved both of the programs. One of the schools of thought is that kids will be engaged in Amplify because it'll be something different after having worked with inter reading for six years. I agree with that, though I would have been comfortable using Into Literature as well. So we're excited about it. It's going to be a lot of work for the teachers as, you know, K through five is experiencing right now, but they're already trying out some more units where we're going to bring in, part of the grant is PD, initial PD. So before the end of the school year, we'll dig deeper into the programs, kind of get into the mindset. And we wrote another grant, as Dr. Burnham has explained, to allow for some summer work for teachers and all of the middle school ELA teachers have already applied to do that summer work. We've also had a great response, K through five, we have all the teachers what we had planned for, plus some. So that's going to be exciting because we'll, we'll get a jump on the six through eight implementation over the summer and hopefully teachers will come into the school year less anxious about implementing this.
Awesome.
The summary.
Anyone have any questions for Mrs. Scott? Mr. Beardmore?
First of all, congratulations on getting grants for this.
Thanks.
It seems like you've done an extraordinary amount of work here, so thank you. As I always say when we talk, for the benefit of everybody, I am not a teacher, so much of what you say, I'm very inexperienced with and we'll just leave it at that. But if these questions come across as uninformed, they are. The existing ELA curriculum for six through eight, how long has that curriculum been in place?
So that's a good question. We don't have one comprehensive curriculum currently that we're using at the middle school. We call it a district developed curriculum and it includes pieces of, I don't know if you remember the Great Books Program. We were actually a model school at the middle school for Great Books years ago. Many of us loved that program, but it wasn't comprehensive. You know, it, it had certain components. But we're, teachers are still using pieces of that. We have some anthologies that we've had over the years with stories that we still love. Some are aligned to the Common Core, some are even older than 2011 when the Common Core came out, but we're still using the story, yet we've had to align our, you know, the questions and the student work to align with the Common Core. So it's, I guess I'm going to call it piecemeal, for lack of a better word. Everybody recognized that, but I do want to recognize that the teachers spent a lot of time really refining that type of a curriculum. And a lot of them are really passionate about some of the texts that they are teaching. But we, we're trying to get away from teaching texts. We want to teach skills and even have it be where, you know, visibly you could have a student choice where the whole class was reading something different, but you're applying the ELA skills to that text. It's just, it's time, everybody, everybody recognized. And we were also asking them to take this district developed curriculum and write it out at a pretty detailed level, which is a ton of work. So I think that kind of also prompted them to say, you know what, let's not spend more hours doing this when it's not, when it's not really exactly where we want it to be. Let's try. Now, they were also concerned, they don't want to be, you know, robots, so to speak, and we don't want that either. We're already seeing, we just observed at the primary school the other day, we're seeing, you know, two kindergarten classrooms, two first period classrooms, teaching the same curriculum, but using a completely individual approach, you know, and it's, it's great to see, even using different tools to access the curriculum or to have students work with it. It was great to see. And that's what we're encouraging the middle school teachers to do as well. Put your own, you know, your own spin on it, your own personality on it. And even if you have supplemental activities, we're going to teach the core units of this new curriculum, but if there's a favorite lesson that you have that goes with the skill we're teaching, do that too. Time is definitely going to be an issue, but after the first year or two, it'll loosen up a bit.
Just one, and thank you for that.
You're welcome.
That additional color. With respect to the, the spending that, that we're looking at here, and for the benefit of those watching at home who are not reading the document that, that we have, the document, at the end of the document outlines the, the grants covering 50% of a one-year print subscription and a three-year digital subscription for the program and accompanying resources, 100% of the initial professional development, and then, you know, additional materials. My question is, is that this spending is clearly oriented to what I would call teacher materials. Is there a corresponding spend for student materials? Or are there other costs associated with this that are not stipulated in this document?
No, not for the first year. So the 50% is covering teacher and student materials for the first year, but we also wrote that second grant, I think it's close to 9,000. That was, we included high quality curriculum materials for that amount, knowing that, I knew that that grant wasn't going to fully cover the material. So we, and I knew what the quote was. So we're getting closer to the purchase of teacher and student, both digital. I also wanted to point out that the curriculum has digital and print resources and it's, it's going to be impossible not to use the digital resources. In this day and age, these curriculums, they include many more resources digitally than they do on paper, but it's, it's a nice balance for kids. And of course, we can, if we want to put something on Google Docs or in Google Classroom, we can do that if we, if we so choose, or if we want to print something and use it in paper, we, we can figure that out. So moving forward, we should have, we'll have the core teacher materials that we need already, and then we're going to have to put the student consumables into the building budget in the fall, but then we'll keep our eye open for grants that could possibly cover that moving forward.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Schoolen-Breeney.
Ms. Scott, can you talk a little bit about getting rid of texts, like the Great Books and going to skills? Like the concern that I have is that I think that there are some books that are just so important that we should have every student read them. And I know from my family's personal experience, my son, he and most of his class really identified with S.E. Hinton's Outsiders. And I know that that's going away.
Not necessarily. Believe me, the seven, two seventh grade teachers are also very fond of that book. We talked about different options for using it in the first year, for example. So, so when I say getting rid of texts, I don't mean that we're going to just get rid of all of the, some of our favorite texts, though with this new curriculum, we're going to stick to the core texts that come with each of the units, especially for the first year. Something like The Outsiders isn't in the seventh grade curriculum, but we are very familiar with the skills that apply to that text. So what we're talking about possibly doing is having it be an outside read, an intervention, maybe for next year and then, or even in a class, kind of having them read several chapters, not working with it in the classroom to the level that they normally do, but still applying again, some of the, the skills in, in reading fiction to that book. Moving forward, after we get through the first year of implementation, we'll, we'll reflect and adjust even more. And certainly down the road, we could supplement one text for another, but I really don't want to do that the first year through because I think we have to give this a fair chance.
Can I ask the follow-up?
Absolutely.
Does this mean that they will not be reading whole books?
No, there are whole books, at least one in every, in every grade level. And then there are recommended books beyond that, that you, you're going to have to make decisions about how to be using those in the classroom.
Sorry, one more.
Go ahead.
One of the topics that's come up periodically in our meetings, both in public comment as well as just comments around the table, both in and outside of meetings, is the need to challenge all students. You know, from those that are a little bit behind, those right at, right at grade level and those that are advanced and beyond grade level. And the challenge that, you know, teachers have in differentiating between those different kids and applying different challenges to them based on the, where they are at a given point in time. Does this curriculum aid in that process in, in terms of both identifying that differentiation and then applying, and again, I know I'm using pedestrian language here, but, and then applying the right tools to be able to, to be able to deliver those, those challenges?
Yes, so it, it has suggestions for advanced learners and for struggling students. And it will also, we're also going to rely on the teacher expertise to, you know, their content area experts. So if we're working with a unit, they don't have to just do, you know, what the curriculum says, cover to cover, though they will be taking advantage of some of the differentiation, then they can add some of their own as well. I'll be honest, the first year through, again, I keep saying this, but it's, it's a lot to take on the first year and digest. We've been doing this at the other grade levels and actually what we're finding and we found when we took a close look at the assessments, for example, and, and there's a lot of writing in this curriculum, that it seems really rigorous. That's kind of one of the, that's something that I keep circling back with teachers and saying, okay, if this is what they expect a third grader or now an eighth grader to be doing, then we need to work on getting there if we're not there already. And I think in many cases, we are there already, but certainly there are some places that we, we have room for improvement. So what we'll do is we'll take advantage of what the curriculum provides and then we can also reflect, which is part of our summer work too at the younger grades, where can we, where can we challenge, do a better job challenging here and here, you know, while we're working with the teachers.
Thank you.
Anything else? I think, I think it's a great idea to have a scaffolded curriculum that can be followed through the middle school. I agree with Tony that, that particularly I remember in the seventh grade, and I'm like a dinosaur, and I remember reading The Outsiders in the seventh grade. You know, I, I realize something like that isn't going to go away because the, the teachers love it, the, even though, like I say, I was in the seventh grade, but it's still current to the kids today. And things like that, you know, are not going to go away. And I wouldn't want them to. And, and I would hope there would be lots of opportunity for choice in, in this curriculum as they go along. Because, you know, a child will read, pick up and read something if it's of their choice much better than if somebody gave me, I know the kids love this Percy Jackson stuff. I wouldn't have read that. That would not have interested me. I would have read none of that. So, you know, and I know it's really good stuff. But just not my taste. You know, and I think that's it with kids.
Yep, and that has come up many times with the teachers too. I mean, they're, they love some of the literature that they work with and some of the nonfiction that they work with. And, you know, to one teacher, something might seem really dry and they're not interested, but some students might be. You know, that's a matter of personal opinion. But, but getting into, you know, being really passionate about a story can sometimes take a while. You know, we read these stories 50 times out loud, you know what I mean? So you, you get to really know, I mean, I've read The Outsiders out loud many times. You know, you, you get to know these sentences and these little nuances and if they, some of the stories might still be included and otherwise it's going to, maybe they'll be, I hope, there's going, there are going to be some stories that really connect with the kids and the teachers. And if not, if we find like something is, that something is too dry or not engaging, then we'll talk about how we can swap it out, but use the same skills, which is back to, we're not married to any particular text necessarily.
And, and just, I'd like the idea that you were talking about, you can develop the same skill using all different books. So, and, and that's something I've done with young kids. You know, we talk about the same skill, but every kid has a different book in their hand. And, and that's something that can be done. And I, I really applaud this, this adventure into a program for middle school aged kids.
Hopefully it'll be good.
So are there any other questions? Then could I then have a motion to approve the new curriculum for middle school ELA?
I'll make a motion to approve the curriculum for ELA grades six through eight.
I'll start it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we're looking forward to hearing how it goes. I'll be back.
Stay golden.
Okay, and now we have staff appreciation resolutions. I have the folder. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to start at the beginning and I will read the first paragraph, and then I'm going to pass it to Brian and he'll read the next one. We'll go all the way down and we'll come all the way back. Okay? That seems to be the best way to handle this one.
That was going over.
So Lunenburg Public Schools' Resolutions. Whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service. And our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Therefore, be it resolved that Lunenburg School Committee proclaim May 1st through 5th, 2023 to be National Teacher Appreciation Week and May 2nd to be National Teacher Appreciation Day.
Whereas principals are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, public relations experts, et cetera, entrusted with the education and development of young people, the most valuable resource. Principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to develop and maintain high curriculum standards and set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence. Therefore, be it resolved in honor of the service of all principals and to recognize the importance of their school leadership so that every child has access to a high-quality education. The day of May 1st, 2023 is hereby designated in Lunenburg to be National Principals' Day.
Whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care, the school community celebrates and acknowledges the accomplishments of school nurses and their efforts of meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of healthcare in our schools and offers gratitude for the district's school nurses who contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy in school and ready to learn. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lunenburg School Committee proclaims May 6th through 12th, 2023 to be School Nurses Week and strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it and personally expressing appreciation to our nurses for their dedication and devotion to their work.
Whereas paraprofessionals play a vital role in the successful operation of our school district and the dedicated and valuable contributions of all the fine people who fill these important positions are integral to the successful daily operation of our public schools. Therefore, be it resolved that Lunenburg, that the Lunenburg School Committee proclaim April 5th, 2023 to be Paraprofessionals Appreciation Day.
Whereas the staff of the district's school meals and nutrition department are committed to providing healthful, nutritious meals to the district's children and the men and women who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lunenburg School District expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable food service employees and commends their good work on behalf of children the day of Friday, May 5th, 2023 as School Lunch Hero Day.
Whereas our custodians are constantly responsible for all Lunenburg Public School facilities. They are the first employees to arrive in the morning and the last employees to leave at night, and their contribution is critical in allowing for the smooth daily operation of the schools. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Committee of the Lunenburg Public Schools, on behalf of all students and personnel, does hereby proclaim the day of October 2nd, 2023 does hereby proclaim the day of October 2nd, 2023 as Custodian Appreciation Day for Lunenburg Public Schools, urging all parents, students, and employees to join in congratulating all custodians for jobs well done and in saying thank you.
Whereas administrative professionals in the Lunenburg Public Schools play key roles, bear many responsibilities, and are crucial to the efficient functioning and smooth running of day-to-day operations as they assist educators, principals, students, and parents. Therefore, be it resolved that Administrative Professionals Day be observed on April 26th, 2023.
Whereas coaches represent stability, consistency, and direction in the lives of many athletes. A coach is a friend and a mentor and an advocate that helps demonstrate to athletes teamwork, discipline, and a healthy attitude toward competition. Therefore, be it resolved the designation of October 6th, 2023 as National Coaches' Day to raise public awareness about the importance and significance, significant role that coaches play in the lives of millions of people in the United States.
Whereas school bus drivers are required to undergo extensive training to improve their knowledge and skills as a way to ensure the safety and well-being of students. The position of a school bus driver requires tremendous responsibility in transporting Massachusetts students through inclement weather conditions and various traffic situations. Therefore, be it resolved, the Lunenburg School Committee proclaims February 22nd, 2023 to be Bus Driver Appreciation Day and strongly encourage all members of our community to join and personally expressing appreciation to our bus drivers for their dedication and devotion to their work. Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department and that members of our department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence or disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Therefore, be it resolved, proclaim the week of May 15th, 2023 to be National Police Officers' Week, adopted this third day of May, 2023. And I will sign that. Those will be our proclamations. And I want to thank everyone for all the help that they give to our school district and to our students. Next, we have donations.
We actually have two donations this evening. The first, from the Whitcomb family. They have donated a pre-owned tenor saxophone and trumpet to the middle high school music department. We're very grateful for this donation, and I would recommend acceptance with gratitude. Additionally, we have a donation from the PTO in the amount of $2,103.35. These are the proceeds from the Spring Book Fair. The check will be deposited in the gift fund and earmarked for the library at Turkey Hill Elementary. And I also recommend acceptance with gratitude for that as well.
All right, so do I have a motion to accept these kind donations?
I'll make a motion to accept these donations with gratitude.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and thank you very much to the Whitcombs and to the PTO for supporting our students. So under Old Business, we have the ESSER grant budget update.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Cassidy, Business Manager. This is a quarterly update for the School Committee and the public regarding our ESSER funds. I want to remind the committee and the public is ESSER II funds run out on September 30th, 2023. We're still on target to expend most of that money. We can talk about the surplus in a minute. But I just want to reflect that we did do significant transfers on ESSER II in February, and it actually was, it led into March. So really aligned some of our purchases and services under that grant. I was hoping that that would bring us down to zero. But under contracted services, we had transferred some money in for the I Ready curriculum. And they cut us a deal. So we actually saved a few thousand dollars on that, which is great. But now it creates a surplus back to the grant. We're projecting a slight increase with non-instructional support salaries. And that's probably driven, that is driven by tutors going slightly over. We increased their hours. Right now, we're projecting a surplus of $1,085. As I reported out to the superintendent today, that has now increased. We had a tutor call in sick two days this week. So that amount is going to go up. It's a very small amount. And what we're recommending, the administration is recommending in front of the School Committee tonight is we've got one last chance to get in front of the School Committee, which is in August. I don't anticipate this amount going into ten thousands of dollars, maybe a few thousand dollars. And we're really, we're looking for some flexibility to whatever balance there is on June 30th is that we use that money to support any other additional technology purchases that we'll have over the summer. And specifically, iPad for the primary school and computer lab at the high school. So we're talking thousands. Just kind of close that grant out as quickly as we possibly can and request those funds. That is a recommendation. If it's the will of the committee not to do that, I will be coming in sometime in August and with an exact amount, with the same recommendation that goes into computer equipment. Unfortunately, at that time, that equipment will, and those purchases will not be ready for the start of the school year. There's another option I can give the committee. If it goes over a certain amount, that we come back to the committee. I just can't imagine that it's going to exceed, you know, maybe five thousand. Unless the tutors stop reporting to work. So it's, you know, this is, it's a wonderful challenge, I guess, is the way I look at it. If we could just skip to ESSER III, and then I'll turn it back to the committee. We did all those adjustments for salaries in March. We're right on target. I'm not anticipating any deficits or surpluses at this time. Probably forecasting a year from now, there may be another thousand, two thousand dollars left in that account that the School Committee is going to have to direct administration to spend. So ESSER III, no determination, no action from the School Committee tonight. ESSER II, I've expressed a couple of options. Give the administration some flexibility to whatever balance there is on June 30th to use for the purchase of technology.
Mr. Beardmore?
I would make a motion that we authorize administration to spend whatever excess ESSER II funds are available as of June 30th on purchases relating to technology.
I'll second.
Any discussion from anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And whatever we do spend, we'll report out to the committee either at the end of August or beginning of September.
I want to thank you for doing such a good job of spending down this money.
Yeah.
It, you know, it was so much money. But to try and figure out what goes where and how much and who gets insurance and who doesn't get insurance, and it, a major, major job. And a lot of places have not spent this down as well, so I thank you.
Well, I think the administration appreciates your support in the needs for student needs in the district. So it's a team effort, so thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have FY '23 Quarterly Budget Report.
Okay, Mike Cassidy, Business Manager again, presenting the quarterly report. So in front of the committee tonight is our quarterly report. This is our checks and balances between administration and the School Committee on how we're spending our money. This document is available on our website. We've identified some negative balances. As I talked about earlier, these negative balances were reconciled in the earlier transfer. I might propose to the School Committee, and I'll take a look at the policy. But I think there's a link sometimes between this presentation and the transfers. And it's maybe, I'll talk to the chair. Yeah, I kind of put them together, put the line item transfers after the budget presentation. Just to make the presentation a little bit better. I think it'll be more clear. I think we're on target. There are any balances that we're looking at. We'll be looking at possible threat assessment for our cybersecurity. Obviously, looking at some additional technology purchases. I know we've got, looking at some other security cameras. But as we get closer to the end of the school year, we'll determine what that balance, those balances are. But we're in pretty good, we're in excellent shape. We're not going to exceed the budget amount established by the town.
Just in terms of end-of-year spending, this is a, I get to play the new guy card because I haven't done this before. Do you have a, like a priority list of things that, you know, you may spend on at the end of the year? And a timeline, like if something requires, for example, a line item transfer or authorization from the School Committee, is that mapped out so that you can get those funds obligated before the end of June?
Yeah, we start talking about potential projects on July 1st for the end of the school year.
Yeah, well, we've had some, like the cybersecurity thing you mentioned. But I just want to make sure that we're all prepared to execute over the course of the next six or seven weeks.
We do have a couple of School Committee meetings that we can make those transfers.
Okay.
So I'm confident. It's really identifying a specific balance. So we're in the process of closing out POs and accounts. And, you know, if I may say, we just added a new student to our out-of-district group. So that threw a little monkey wrench into some of our budget planning. So we went back to the drawing board a bit on that. So we're not anticipating any more costs like that. But you saw or approved some of our transfers for our substitutes. So we're trying to manage that. Those aren't budget breakers. But it's trying to predict what we're going to be spending in those accounts to see what those light items are going to be like at the end of the year. I'm doing forecasts every week. As soon as I hear that Town Hall posts something, I'm doing a download.
You do a good job at, as evidenced by the, as evidenced by the previous report, you do a good job at sticking the landing, so that's what I'm asking.
So this is, I guess, a report of progress to the School Committee.
Okay. All right, we just need to accept this report, this quarterly report.
I'll make a motion to accept this quarterly budget report.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. All right, now we have the Third Read of Policies. 3204, Acceptance of Gifts, Grants, and Requests. 3402, Payment Procedures. 3406, Depository of Funds Authorized Signatures. 3410, Purchasing Principles, Expenditures, Procurement, and Authority.
I've highlighted the MASC recommended language in each of these draft policies. That language was provided with the draft so that everyone could see what the recommended language was. That will not be part of the policy. So that language that is MASC and highlighted in yellow does not have to be read as part of the read of the policy.
Jim, can you give the first two?
Yes. No, 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 I'm just looking for them. I'm looking for them in the folders as you guys are talking.
Fiscal Management and Non-Instructional Operations 3000, Income 3200, Acceptance of Gifts, Grants, and Bequests 3204. Upon approval, notification, grants and gifts to the district shall be reviewed and accepted by the School Committee before expenditure or use. Donations from industry, business, or special interest group may be accompanied by an acknowledgement but advertising or promotion through school channels or on school grounds and school property is prohibited. The School Committee may accept on behalf of and for the School Department any bequest or gift or money or property for a purpose deemed by the School Committee to be suitable and may utilize such money or property as designated. The School Committee may set up criteria to be met in the acceptance of gifts and the procedure for examining and evaluating offers of gifts to the district. Gifts shall automatically become the property of the school district. Any gift of cash, regardless of donor intent, will be accepted by vote of the School Committee, kept separate from the general fund and expended at the discretion of the Committee as provided by law. The Superintendent may accept on behalf of the school system and subject to the criteria set forth by the School Committee, all non-monetary gifts with fair market value less than $2,000, subject to review of the School Committee at its next regularly scheduled meeting. All non-monetary gifts with a fair market value greater than $2,000 and all monetary gifts must be on the agenda for the next regularly scheduled School Committee meeting. Tony, you just let me close this out because I got nervous.
I'm sorry.
You just asked me something. For scheduled School Committee meeting for vote on acceptance. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, all monetary gifts accepted by the School Committee will be deposited with the Town Treasurer for school purposes. Expenditures of such gifts for the purposes approved by the School Committee can then be made without further appropriation. The Committee directs the Superintendent to assure that an appropriate expression of thanks is given all donors. Source MASC, updated 2022. Legal references MGL 4453A, 7137A. Cross-references DD Grants, Proposals, and Special Projects GBEBD, Online Fundraising and Solicitation Crowdfunding. Fiscal Management and Non-Instructional Operations 3000, Expenditures 3400, Payment Procedures 3402. procedures 3402. All claims for payment from school department funds shall, will be processed in accordance with procedures developed by the town accountant. Payment will be authorized against invoices properly supported by approved purchase orders with properly submitted vouchers or in accordance with salaries and salary schedules approved by the school committee. The signatures of at least one school committee member will be required to authorize warrants for payment. When a potential conflict of interest exists, the school committee member will abstain from signing warrants. The superintendent will sign warrants before their presentation to the committee, assuring that the budget allocations are observed and that total expenditures do not exceed the amount allocated in the budget for all items. The committee shall receive monthly lists of bills, warrants for payment from school department funds. The committee shall designate by vote a single member to be responsible for the review and approval of the warrants as correct and approved for payment. Warrants then will be forwarded to the town accounting department for processing and subsequent payment by the municipal treasurer. A record of this action shall be made available to the committee on the agenda of the next regular meeting. Actual invoices, statements and vouchers will be available for inspection by the school committee upon request. Legal references MGL, Chapter 41, Section 354152. Source MASC, updated 2022, legal references MGI 4141, 4152, 4156. Cross-references DGA Authorized Signatures. Note, specific titles established by individual town should be substituted for those required in the policy above which were established by that city's code of ordinances. Appropriate citations should also be substituted. The above language implements a single signatory of district warrants. It should be altered according to district practice. Adopted Lunenburg School Committee, April 26, 2021, reviewed September 23, 2009, revised and approved January 22, 2020. Yeah, you got it. All right, here. Tony, I'm going to miss you.
Fiscal Management and Non-Instructional Operations 3000, expenditures 3400, Depository of Funds Authorized Signatures 3406. Town Treasurer, the town treasurer holds all funds designated for school department expenditure and is only, is the only authorized disperser of payment for the school system's bills and debts. The town treasurer signs all checks drawn against school funds. At its annual organization meeting, the committee will designate by roll call vote to authorize the school committee chair as the individual who may sign the school committee or the school department payroll, thereby allowing checks to be issued to employees. The committee will vote to authorize the vice chair to sign payroll in the absence of the chair. In the absence of the chair and the vice chair, the committee will vote to authorize the secretary to sign payroll. The superintendent or their designee will sign federal funding requests. And we omit the MS, okay. Source MASC, updated 2022, legal reference Mass. General Laws 4141, 4152 and 4156. Cross-reference DK Payments Procedure. Note, the above language implemented a single signatory of district warrants. It should be altered according to district practice. Town and city charters often address this topic. Alignment with charters is necessary. Reference to appropriate sections of the charter should be added as necessary. Legal reference Mass. General Laws 4453. Adopted Lunenburg School Committee, April 2000, April 26, 2020, 2001, reviewed September 23, 2009, revised and approved 1/22/20. Then the next one. I got that one. Fiscal Management and Non-Instructional Operations 3000, expenditures 3400, Purchasing Principles, Expenditures, Procurement and Authority 3410. The superintendent will serve as the chief procurement officer per annual vote of the school committee. He, she will develop and administer the purchasing program for the schools in keeping with the legal requirements and with the adopted school budget. No person shall contract a bill on behalf of the school committee unless it shall have been, unless it shall have been authorized and the order has been given to the prescribed purchase order form signed by the chief procurement officer. The purchasing agent is the focal point for all procurement of supplies, equipment and services. Other employees in the system can initiate contact with salespeople. Only the purchasing agent can commit a purchase. The, the basic obligation of the purchasing agent is to acquire services and materials needed by the school district at the lowest possible cost at the proper time. Dollar limitations and public advertising. Actual experience indicated that advertising for bids on low value purchases causes unnecessary delays and incurs extra costs. Inflationary trends warrant periodic reviews to determine a satisfactory dividing line between formal and informal purchases. One, purchases as stated in Mass. General Laws 30B Uniform Procurement for Supplies, Services and Real Property under Chapter 687 and Section 4B of the General Laws relating to education. Purchase, purchases of equipment, supplies, materials, services and real property shall follow all state, local and federal laws and regulations regarding bidding, including but not limited to MGL 30B. To foster greater efficiency, the superintendent will enter into state and local government, intergovernmental agreements where appropriate for procurement or use of common or shared services and utilize available state contracts. Note, Chief Procurement Officer is the purchasing agent. Master on Law, Chapter 44, Section 103. Source MASC, updated 2022, legal reference MGL 722A, 722B, 3039M, 30B. Cross-reference DJA Purchasing Authority. Note, cross-reference is to a closely related policy in this manual. Note, town or city charters may contain related provisions. If so, appropriate citation should be added to the legal references, updated 9/23/09. One thing that I noticed, and this is just, I don't think it's a wrong, wrong thing, but this is the only one that I've seen so far where we did not use the Oxford comma. So I don't know if that's like a style thing, but it doesn't change the, the substance of it. But this is the only one so far that I, I can remember.
Well, I think we could add that in the proofreading.
Do we have a school committee style guide?
I don't know. I just, this is the only one we didn't do that. So I was like, oh, okay.
Maybe we need another policy.
No, no. Awesome, meeting tomorrow? Good.
Okay, duly noted. So do I have a motion to approve these four policies with the comma situation corrected?
I'll make a motion to approve the policies that we just read.
And a second?
I'll say it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, now we have reports. Who has any reports from any? Laura?
I have the School Advisory Council from the primary school on the 24th. I was not there, so I'm just taking Mr. Adams' notes. Field trips, kindergarten is going to Davis Farmland, first grade is going to the Franklin Park Zoo. Not entirely, certainly more second grades. Oh, second grade did fever book, I believe. They're going to check on excuse language homework policy for the handbook. They updated the CSIP with new evidence that they'll be sharing results from the parent student surveys to see where areas of improvement are for next week. Animal adventures are coming on May 15.
Oh, that's cool.
That is super exciting. I wonder if they need parent volunteers for that.
Or school committee.
All school Olympics are being held. They're doing an end of the year drone picture. There's going to be a presentation from the school adjustment councils on the acceptance of others. And for June, they're going to do See How I Bloomed, which is super cute. So it looks like everything's going wonderful over at the primary school.
Awesome. Anyone else? Mr. Beardmore?
The high school advisory council met last Thursday. We had several items that were discussed in a relatively brief meeting. We're very efficient. Notable, the high school class registration process has been on an accelerated pace this year. And it seems as if students will be leaving school this year with a good understanding of what their schedule is for the following year, which is a substantial achievement, I think, overall, but in comparison to previous years. And kudos to the administration for figuring out how to do that and making it possible. I think it's basically reflective of a lot of work. Also, there was a discussion, and I would imagine that this will eventually come to the school committee, about a proposed blackout days for assessments. And this relates to a topic that's come up in public comment here in the past around religious holidays. And the, I'm probably going to butcher the, the thinking behind this, but basically the idea would be that assessments avoid high holidays to the greatest extent possible automatically, rather than relying on a student to communicate to a teacher that a high holiday conflict exists, thereby effectively forcing them to communicate their religious preference and creating a, sort of a First Amendment catch, catch 22 sort of situation. There are potential challenges that exist with that. If you go to the Anti-Defamation League website and look at all of the holidays, you're going to see that there are a lot. And so there have been, there were a number of questions that were asked by the advisory committee that were taken by administration and I think further discussion will, will happen on that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schoolbrining?
So the first thing I would ask is that the two committees that I am on, or the three that I, I go to, the advisory committee for the middle school is during the workday and it is very difficult for me to make sure that I can do that. The other two committees are committees that meet very regularly. And so there have been a couple of times when I've had three school committee meetings in one week, and that's just a lot. So if anybody would be willing to take the middle school advisory, it'd be great. And if not, I'll just try to make it work. But that was the first thing. The policy subcommittee met, we went through and approved all the minutes. And the, the PTO met and Dr. Burnham, I believe you were there for most of it. And we, they asked Dr. Burnham a bunch of questions. We also talked about the money raised by Mario, which was quite a bit.
Okay.
And it was a really big success. They sold out all the tickets. And then they're planning for the Hollis Hills event. And they are looking into whether or not a student band could play at the Hollis Hills event, to which the student band immediately asked one and only one question, which was, what should we wear? They were like, they're not like yes or no, what do we have to play? What should we wear? And they're like, eh, they're in. So hopefully they can make that work. And I think that, given Henry Gilman's mother's persistence, it will happen.
That would be terrific. And I can fulfill your middle school advisory through the end of the year, I'm quite certain. Yes?
I was going to say, I'd also add that we're going to be shortly coming up with new ones too, as we newly appointed school committee, so that's exciting.
So we can figure that out, but if there's something between now and then.
Yeah, we can all help out.
Let me know.
I did have a committee report too. The Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee met Monday. We were really trying to finalize a concept to bring to the select board with also some rough numbers, rough figures that we could try to give the select board some feedback with, without having to hire someone to calculate very specific numbers. Using the studies that we've done in the past, mostly focused on the new build of TCP having around $30 million for about 55,000 square feet, we use that number of $545 per square foot to do some estimates. So with the TCP building having a tear down in the north wing and most of the west wing, that square footage came out to an estimate of around 13.6 million. The town hall with, again, the $545 per square foot, came out to about 3.5 million. That would be more of the meeting house. The Ritter building has two components, the, the renovation and then also the, the attached new build or the separate build for the town offices was around 5.3 million for a total of around 22 million. There was talk about ADA compliance in the town hall. We had actually looked at the map and the, the line is right on the edge of the building. So there's definitely concerns about ADA compliance and how, how to work that. But there was definitely some ideas and some engineers on the committee that had some ideas, possibly an easement or working the other side as a possibility or the back as well. We had talked about a phased approach, likely we'd be starting with the Ritter building first and then moving to the town hall, kind of the, the two important buildings that, that people really care about. And we plan to meet with the select board on May 16th to go over those plans and get feedback from them. There was also discussion, which was interesting, about the schools and, and land available. And Mr. Jeffries brought up that the select board and the town does have control over some large plots of land in town as other options for schools. He brought up there's some land off of Pleasant Street for a school potentially. And there's also some land close to that off of West Street too that has potential for a school building. That was it.
Okay.
I have a question related to that. You had mentioned basically three large projects, that being TC Passios, the Ritter and Town Hall. I'm assuming this is still following the theory that school administration would eventually go to the Ritter. This would become a meeting house and TC Passios would eventually become a town hall, for lack of a better description.
I think it was more of like a community center, the TC.
But, but town offices would effectively be in the west wing of TC Passios.
It would be in the Ritter, yeah, the Ritter. The new, the new, yeah, town offices would be in the expanded, newer building where the schools would take up the, the current Ritter with a renovation.
Understood.
So that way, all the, one of the goals was that the, all the offices were together, schools and town hall.
Would, what would be the, are we still operating on the assumption that extended day would revert back to the schools?
Yes.
And as a result of that, has there been any discussion or has the building committee come in with an opinion in terms of what to do about gymnasium space or the shortage thereof?
The idea of a new gymnasium was brought up, but I think the, the cost of it was a concern, I think, for the committee. That was the, it didn't really get much leg, legwork there.
I think that's going to be a problem. Just my own personal opinion, I think that that's going to be a problem. I think, you know, as, as we have talked about being a partner in this and not pursuing a short term, a short to midterm program to address Turkey Hill, so as the town will have sufficient debt capacity to do all these projects, there are needs that the school district has. Number one is we service our community with space for a whole bunch of different things, including town meetings and all kinds of community events. And we have a shortage of gymnasium space in Lunenburg. And as a result of this, we are going to have more of a shortage of gymnasium space. And those gymnasiums will not, particularly at Turkey Hill and the primary school, will not be available for use much before 6:00 PM any day of the week. And I, I think that that's going to be problematic. And then the second piece is something that I think still needs discussion and part of this is on us, is we need to firm up what the Turkey Hill Get Healthy Program is and get some level of assurance from town leadership that that will be prioritized as part of the, of the capital planning process. And I, I think that that may require some fiscal policy to go along with that. And I, I think that that may require some fiscal policy to go along with that. But there's a lot to do here. It's not just, here's, here's a sum of money that's available for borrowing, and we're all in because the building committee says so. There's, there's a lot of interest here that need to be accounted for, and I think that at Mr. Jeffries' suggestion, when he came and met with us last fall, we have conceded quite a lot. Um, and I, so far, I'm, I'm wondering if that's being reciprocated.
So Mr. Jeffries has spoke at the meeting that, that he supports Turkey Hill, but there obviously nothing in, in writing or anything like that. Um, and I, I would also say that the building design committee will make a recommendation to the select board, but really it's kind of turning it over to the select board to, to make the final decision where they want to go with it and what kind of town meeting decisions are gonna get made. Thank you.
Okay. Um, my report is from the finance committee. They met on Thursday, April twentieth, and basically the discussion was about their letter that will accompany the warrant. It was not in time for the warrant to go out, so when you do go to town meeting, make sure you pick up the letter from the finance committee to go with your warrant that you already have. That was most of the discussion. Um, they also, during their committee reports, their report on our committee meeting, and I was not in live time, so I couldn't jump in at them and tell them, but their report on our committee meeting was not, um, accurate because the microphones kept going out. So that's something we're going to need to watch at our next meeting. Um, it was the batteries, we thought, and we're gonna have to all make sure we know when ours is working and when it isn't, because I am not good at microphones that, I was smarter than a sixth grader. Apparently I was supposed to keep hitting the microphone. It was lit, I thought it was fine, but everybody else's was red, I noticed later, so we need help, microphone help. So, um, we're gonna have to watch that carefully, um, in the future.
Has there been any further discussion with PAC about partnering on our hybrid meetings from the middle high school and broadcasting those live?
Um, there has been no discussion that I know of. I think they're working on what to do with the auditorium. Is my understanding is that's, that's where they're focusing their energy on, I believe. Is that correct?
It goes back to, they were waiting on network upgrades on, on the school department end, and, uh, that has been completed at this point. Um, so we, we can reengage, uh, with that exploration for what it would take to, to have PAC be able to broadcast from the building.
And, and I'm not very well-read into the situation at PAC, but I understand that they've been doing some policy work around equipment and that sort of thing. And the discussions that we had with their leadership back last summer was that their intent was, once we had these hybrid meetings running from the middle high school, is that we would be able to broadcast on channel ninety-nine live.
Right.
Um, as, and, and I would imagine if it's going out live, there would be somebody to tell us that our microphones aren't working and that sort of thing. Um, there's a, we were, we're live on Zoom. So the fact that there is a Zoom feed that is working and they have a Castas box that can take that Zoom and put it into a, into a, uh, cable channel, my thinking is that they ought to have what they need. Um, and I, I would just like to request that we get a follow-up and, and a, if, if it can't be done, a detailed explanation as to why and what is being done to overcome that.
Okay. Um, so that brings us to public comment. Everybody's set with their, is there any public comment from anyone? I am seeing no public comment, so we're on to topics for future discussion. What is the status of, um, a lawyer coming to talk to us about the bullying issue?
She, um, will be getting back to me relative to providing, um, an overview, a legal overview of the bullying law. Um, still checking on availability. I'm trying to schedule a date that, that would work for her as well as, um, this group. However, um, maybe there's a possibility, uh, to facilitate this a little bit, um, that she may be able to sort of, uh, pre-record, um, a, a voiceover essentially of, of slides as a presentation, and we could have a video, um, to review.
That, to me, that would be fine, but I'd like to get this done sooner rather than later, so if there's a way we can expedite that, I think that would be good. Obviously, um, Turkey Hill continues to be something we need to talk about, and, um, I'll be curious to see how the presentation goes for the, um, municipal building committee on the sixteenth, and maybe that will give us some guideline as to what they're thinking, and then we can jump off of that. And you had something else?
Yeah, Ed, uh, we had talked about the, the scoreboard, there's an advertisement, and people are interested in getting that covered. It was the, I think it's the Foster Healy in the top right corner.
Oh.
Get like a Blue Knight or something like that to cover it up, potentially.
Okay, so we can add that to the list to talk about. And if there is nothing else, then I would take a motion to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
I'll make a motion. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty then. So at, um, eight oh seven, we will go into executive session.